Good evening, everyone. The July 18th, 2024 meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees is hereby called to order, and won't you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just by way of quick roll call, we have Trustee Cross attending remotely by phone. Can you hear us okay, Trustee Cross? Well, he's out there somewhere. And again, I'm looking at the ceiling like he's going to magically speak to me. He was in the waiting room, so I'm confident that he's there. And so with that, we do have everyone in attendance, and we have a quorum, and so we'll get things started. And this is one of my favorite times of the year because we get to hear from our folks from the Small Business Development Center. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Korb to make some introductions and hear what we're going to learn about these folks.
Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt, but I am here.
Well, hi, Lee. We do have several awards tonight, and so I am actually just going to turn this over to Elisa Waldman, our Vice President of Workforce Development and Continuing Education.
Good evening. It's nice to see all of you and all of you. Pleasure to be here. As you may or may not know, we have over 285,000 small businesses in the state of Kansas, and we have our own Small Business Development Center here on campus that does tremendous work. Our SBDC, it's the acronym for Small Business Development Center, serves three counties, Johnson, Miami, and Wyandotte, which between them are home to over 88,000 businesses. So our center serves approximately 30% of all of the businesses in the state. And this meeting is part two. We had an earlier celebration to recognize four of our clients who are incredible businesses, all served by our SBDC at Johnson County Community College. They are being honored tonight as emerging, existing, exporting and exporting businesses, as well as a business which is served by our Apex Accelerator Program. You may remember, we have a PTAC, a Procurement Technical Assistance Center on campus. PTAC has recently been rebranded to Apex Accelerator, and through that program, we help businesses secure federal contracts. So we have four business award winners this evening, and we wanted to give you a chance to meet them, ask questions if you have any of them. This will probably be a little longer than usual in terms of our recognitions, but we usually save this for the July meeting since it's sometimes a shorter meeting, given it's summer. But I want to recognize our SBDC team. Our advisors are all here, with the exception of one who is not able to make it. But we've got all of our advisors. You'll hear a little bit more about the amazing work that they've done, and you'll hear in just a minute from Suzie Pryor. Suzie is our new Regional Director at our JCC SBDC. She recently took that role. It had been previously served by Jessica Johnson, who is now our Executive Director in our branch. So keeping it all in the house, I think Melinda's here as well. We have a long history of SBDC directors on the JCC team. But Suzie and her team directly supported these businesses every step of the way, and every single member of the team, as I said, is here this evening. We appreciate all the effort they give. So I am especially pleased to introduce you to Suzie Pryor. She is not new to the SBDC program, however. She most recently served as the Assistant State Director for the state of Kansas, and she joined our team a few months ago as our Regional Director. So I am now going to hand it over to Suzie to introduce you to our wonderful award winners.
Elisa and Dr. Korb, thank you. Board of Trustees, thank you for giving us the opportunity to do this. It's an emotional thing for me. In 1995, I walked into an SBDC. Melinda was the advisor at that time. She helped me start a British shop in Lawrence, Kansas. It's turning 30 years old next year, and I credit its success to SBDC advisors like the folks who work for us. So I am really privileged and honored to be able to talk to you about four businesses tonight that 30 years from now are going to look back and be talking about the same kinds of experiences. I'm humbled. I think one of the things that probably most people in this room recognizes is that small business ownership is one of the most challenging and one of the most rewarding walks of life, requires tremendous dedication, and no small measure of sacrifice. The folks that you're going to meet tonight and their families and friends have made sacrifices so that they could operate businesses in our communities that add to the quality of life as well as the economic structure. Last year, our team worked with more than 1,200 small businesses. So it's not an easy feat to join us in this room tonight. It's a competitive process, and the folks that you're going to meet were chosen by our staff, and they all are exceptional in their own right. Elisa mentioned that we have our staff members here tonight. John Odessi could not be with us, however, we have Darren Fichtner, Stephanie Willis, our Capital Access Director, Vince Hayworth, and our Apex Director, Keon Meldro. And they're all standing back there waving at you. I want to give you just a brief description of the four businesses you're going to meet. In each case, I'm going to ask the business to join me at the podium. I'm going to keep my remarks brief. They will probably do the same because they're going to choose to. And then we'll allow you to ask any questions or make any comments that you would like. I think when you hear their stories, you're going to understand why we have selected them as our 2024 JCC SBDC Small Businesses of the Year. So I am going to ask Sam Almarani, Caroline McIntosh, and Tony Simpson from Bimini Pet Health Products to join me at the podium. If you're a pet lover, you're going to love these folks. So Bimini has been producing top-quality supplements and treats since 2013, and their products adhere to federal food manufacturing standards for human consumption, which ensures the highest quality pet product on the market. Their product line includes soft chews, baked treats, powders, oils, and liquids. They came to our office because they wanted an export plan. And if you've worked with Kansas small businesses, there's a dearth of businesses who are really willing to go down that path. They worked with John Odessi, and he directed them towards the Heartland Export Accelerator Program and helped them prepare for a trade show in the Middle East. Caroline made a comment about the SBDC that I wanted to share. She said that our support was crucial for market research and trade show preparation. And she says new business owners, she encourages them to explore the various state and federal programs available to assist small businesses. And so I present the Bimini team.
Any questions or remarks for this team?
Just a brief question, and then I'll turn it over to my colleagues up here behind the dais. What got you into this business to begin with?
I actually used to work for Hills Pet Nutrition in Topeka, Kansas, and after parting ways, I wanted to not work for anybody else. So I decided that it's time to find something that we can do on our own, and we started the business really on paper. We used a lot of co-packers in the early years, and then we started using our basement and our garage. And then now we have an 11,000-square-foot facility, 25 employees, and we're exporting. So it's been, what, 11, 12 years now, but, you know, we got there.
Well, that's awesome. With a household where some would say I have too many fur babies, I'm aligned with your vision. Any questions for these wonderful folks? Trustee Ratan.
What made you want to get into the export business? And have there been any cultural considerations that you've had to think about?
Yeah, so we, cultural considerations are very important in any export business, and also the environment, the political environment, the, there's a lot of, for example, you take really easy steps if you're trying to go to China. There's IP law issues, there's a lot of complications there with respect to, you know, if you're going to the Middle East, you have to be cognizant of the fact that pets are not quite the same, looked at the same way as they are in the West. So there are absolutely 1,000 different things that you have to go through, and we, by participating in these kinds of courses, we try to understand as much as we can about where we're going, how they operate, what the, what the local laws are, what the country, you know, how they, you know, how they treat companies from outside their countries. So all of these things have to be taken into account because obviously it affects the business in the end. And this has been very helpful for us because we, as much as we do our own research, having somebody who has done it and also understanding all the available resources, both federal, state, and local, is very important. We didn't know that until we actually participated in this, in this course.
Thank you.
Trustee Smith-Everett.
I just wanted to know what the inspiration was for your name.
Bimini. Actually, it was easy. The company was already in existence. Some of my friends came up with the name. I went in with them. We didn't really know what the company was doing initially. Before we moved into the pet business, I had bought the company from them, so I just kept the name. And it basically, when they, when I asked them the same question, Bimini is an island in the Caribbean, and it's known for youthfulness and people frolicking happily. So it's kind of a wellness business, a health and wellness business, and that goes well with it.
Well, let's all go there.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for these wonderful folks? Yes, Trustee.
So are all of the products packaged as Bimini?
Yes. So since 2018, we've been vertically integrated. We actually make everything, package it, not in our garage anymore. And we, and we, actually now, the facilities are inspected by USDA for export purposes. We're registered with the FDA because we have to be, and we're also audited as a food, human food manufacturing facility. So we're operating at that much higher level than a lot of our competitors.
Thank you. Any other questions? Just very quickly, what's next on the horizon?
Well, I'm hoping, we're actually just releasing a brand now, our own brand. So we're a contract manufacturer. We support about 35 brands of pet supplements that you guys are probably, if you own dogs and you purchase Glucosamine, Kondroy, and MSM, we probably make some of those that you purchase them from Amazon Chewy. We supply a lot of people who actually sell on those. But we now have our own branded product, and we're targeting the veterinary channel with it. The vision for the company is that it's begun to become an animal health company rather than just a contract manufacturer for pet supplements.
Awesome. Awesome. Well, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You already sing it, aren't you? These folks are exceptional. I would like next to invite the owners of Creative Displays, well, Angela Primavera, to the podium. There she is. I have gotten the opportunity, we have a program here called CEO Roundtable, and I've gotten to visit with Angela in that setting a number of times. It's very exciting, CEOs of small businesses sit together and support one another and try to help each other grapple with problems and questions and opportunities. And she's, she's quite impressive. So she owns Creative Displays Incorporated, and at Creative Displays, retail as usual just is not enough. Now, the company aims to create lasting memories. Since 1959, their personalized customer service and creative holiday lighting products have set them apart from others in their industry. Angela sought help from the Kansas Small Business Development Center as her business expanded. Through the game series, which refers to growth through action management and engagement and participation in the roundtable, and along with guidance from her advisor Stephanie Willis, Creative Displays has enhanced financial planning, sales, and employee management, and enjoyed some tremendous growth. Angela says the SBDC has been invaluable, and her advice to business owners is focus on adding value for your customers and doing common things uncommonly well. Believe in what you're doing and enjoy the journey. So please welcome Angela.
Great philosophy, right? Find something you love and then do it the best you can. And gosh, that's kind of a win-win for you and everybody who gets to, gets to benefit from what you do. So any questions for Angela? Trustee Smith-Everett.
I was going to say, so tell me a little bit about what your biggest growth is in display, in lighting, is that right? Display lighting, commercial lighting?
Sure.
So what was your biggest area of growth?
So I purchased the company seven years ago in 2017. This will be my eighth season. So I came from a corporate career. I worked for Lee Jeans here in Kansas City and was a global VP for them. And then Lee moved from Kansas City to Greensboro. So I had to kind of figure out what is that next phase in my life and what does it look like, and decided to take the leap into entrepreneurship. So when I bought the company, we were focused mostly on the install market. So think like lights on the plaza, town center. We sold about the commercial and the residential installer. So had a great presence locally and then also did some work with municipalities. So my direction in taking the company was how do we take this to the next level? So launching a website to take us more, we actually are global. We did like Bahamas and Virgin Islands and some other locations, but how to take it and focus more on the municipality and the business in addition to that installer. So we've had some tremendous growth there. We actually, our company has tripled in eight years in employing more associates. Here locally, we're based in Kansas City, but really focusing on businesses and bringing more creativity, not just making it a commodity. So a lot of design work, if you check out our, our website, but taking it from local, which we love, all of our local partners like City of Shawnee, Lenexa, Leewood, Overland Park, Parkville, St. Joe, and more local partners to taking it, just opening it up more globally, mostly US-based. We do a lot with the military, just wrapped up like a big display with one of the Army bases. So that's like a new avenue that we're focused on, and I'm going to, working on like a military discount, but, you know, just focusing on that and just bringing the joy to others. You know, it is challenging, like the B2B, to see that end-use customer, but really that's where we're kind of focused for the future is like more of that, the business of the municipalities, and those are, could be really big projects for us.
Trustee Ratan.
What's been your most fun or creative project?
Ooh. Oh, my goodness. One that's just current, and this isn't, maybe I just want to name drop because it's cool, but we had NBC call us and our lights are going to be in the Olympics, but that wasn't creative. The most creative, it's an Eiffel Tower, and it's going to be in the backdrop, but, and then we're going to be in a movie that's called Oh, What Fun with Michelle Pfeiffer. So not necessarily creative. We designed a light park, I would say, like from a creativity standpoint, and I started a partnership with this farm. They're actually right outside of New York City in Bergen County, like Real Housewives of New Jersey. They shop at this place, but it's like a farm right outside the city. So worked with the owner and developed this light park where people can drive through, and it worked out great. It exploded during COVID because it was something where families could come and enjoy and go through this spectacular light show. And then he, it was a tremendous success for his business because it added on to his cash flow. And then two years later, we developed a whole Halloween show. So it was like skeletons with top hats and just bat art and so many fun things for families to do. So that one was really creative and special, and just a partnership now that's lasted five years with this customer. So. Thank you.
I believe Trustee Cross has a question for you, and he's in the ceiling. So just look up. Trustee Cross, go right ahead.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. How do you manage uncertainty and, how do you approach that as a small business owner?
So for me, I just try to roll with things, just the uncertainty. I did, like, right when I purchased this company was faced with the tariff. You know, you always like, that person had it so easy, like we had the tariffs and just trying to navigate for our company because we actually had to pay those tariffs. You know, that was kind of the uncertainty of that. And then going through COVID with everything shut down, so it was just like reinventing. So for me, it's just some, things are just going to happen, and I just try to maintain composure. And, you know, I am like more of a creative. I like the analytical, but it's just creatively, how do we kind of solve through some things? But from what I found, like every year, there's been something, uncertainty that I didn't know was going to happen, and, you know, we just work our way through it. And I always try to focus on the positive because there are always, there's always something that, we lost it, you know, like what are the good things that are happening? But, you know, I think as a business owner, and I think what I like about entrepreneurship is maybe it is that uncertainty, you know? Like if everything was perfect and planned out, then, you know, it might be boring, but this is not boring.
No, I agree. I have to tell my wife that my success is not inevitable, and often I didn't know how to get there as a small business owner. So I appreciate your perspective, and I thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Sorry, I will just say I just checked out their website. It is very cool. They do a lot of really cool stuff. So I'm like, oh, yeah, that's them. I know that. I know that display. So very neat.
So, you know, I hear it's been Christmas in Independence Square this month, so don't know if you were involved in that at all, but I am intrigued by what you're doing on military installations. And as a veteran, I can tell you that that is one of the most difficult times, the holiday season is one of the most difficult times for people who are away from home, serving their country, and to be able to, what a great gift you're giving. And it kind of brings full circle what you said at the beginning, which is find something you're passionate about and do it really well because that truly makes a difference in people's lives. So kudo to you, and gosh, best of luck in continuing to grow your company. So congratulations.
Thank you. And I would like to thank the SBDC team and Stephanie, really instrumental, like coming from corporate, you think you know a lot, but as a business owner, like I didn't know a lot. You know, there was just so many, like, okay, the operations, you know, they really helped me, you know, be successful. So I definitely want to give kudos to that team. So thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. I'd like to now ask Jennifer Webker and Peggy Schultz of Resettle Me to join me at the podium. They are accepting our award tonight, or they accepted the award as the Emerging Business of the Year. If you have ever moved or helped someone move, you will find these next award winners very moving indeed. Sorry, bad joke. However, I have just moved, and I wish I had known about their services when I went through it. It was kind of traumatizing. I don't know. So these guys take the trauma out of moving. They were founded on the premise that with the right partner, moving can be manageable, especially for older adults, which is their target market. So since 2016, they focused on providing comprehensive support throughout the moving process, ensuring a smooth transition for their clients. What sets Resettle Me apart is their team's expertise in understanding the unique needs of older adults. They offer specialized training for working with people facing dementia and are the only company in the Kansas City metro area with A-plus accreditation from the National Association of Senior and Specialty Move Managers, which is impressive. I tell you, when we try to advise them, they remind us about that accreditation and the ethical standards that support their business. So it is very impressive. When expanding their business, Jennifer turned to the SBDC and joined our game program, gaining practical strategies for growth, and she received valuable assistance from Darren Fichtner. She says it's been, it's been huge to have an impartial third party weighing in on issues. Kind of weird to be quoting folks who are standing right here. Sorry about that. And her advice, think like a big company from the start. Excellent advice. Define procedures and delegate to keep yourself as the rainmaker, not the main worker bee. Great advice, and any questions you have from these gals, you're going to find them fascinating.
Thank you.
And what kind of questions do we have for these fine young ladies? Trustee Smith-Everett.
I always have questions.
I know, you always have questions. That's wonderful.
So tell me, what inspired you? I love that, I think this is a really, in some ways, a very niche thing, but then in other ways, it is universal because anyone that has aging parents or aunts and uncles or grandparents, and you're the one that's tasked to move them one day, you know that it's, it's different than moving a household. So what inspired you to start this?
So we got started in this business, first of all, we are, we started as a family business. We're actually mother-daughter. And Peggy had an aunt who lived up in Minneapolis, who was leaving her home that she'd lived in for almost 50 years, and she didn't have kids, and she needed help, and we live down here, and so, you know, Peggy got up there. And at the suggestion of the senior community that she was moving to, they recommended a company like what we are today to help with her transition. And Peggy came home and said, that was amazing, and I think we could do that here. So we benefited first from being on the receiving end of this service, and it was really remarkable. There are the ways that that company just anticipated things that we didn't think of. That is what we try to offer our clients today. We understand what it's like to be trying to talk your 85-year-old mother out of her china collection that isn't quite going to fit in the new place that we're going, and that's because she's got emotional attachments to these things. This is a very different type of move. This is not, you know, you're moving for the, for the expanding family or the new job. This is a move where you're facing a lot of loss, and it's just one more loss in a string of many. And so we try to bring empowerment to the clients that are moving. You know, this is their move, and it doesn't matter if they're facing dementia, they still have the right to make choices. And we try to kind of serve as guidance to the family, but also representative to the client. So we have a fantastic team that really is why we're able to do what we do. They, just about everybody on our team has been in the position of being a family member on the other side. That brings them some unique expertise also to the situation.
Questions? Trustee Ratan.
I just want to say thank you. Been there, done that, and it was unpleasant. So didn't know you existed, and, yeah, there's a lot of loss, and you don't want to be the bad guy, and all the emotions and emotional attachment and emotions of moving and loss. So thank you for doing what you're doing.
Absolutely.
Nice to know that you're out there.
Thank you.
You know, I, it seems to me that as young people, we move because we want to. As elder people, we move because we have to. And that's a whole different, that's a whole different emotion. What's the most challenging thing about managing that, and how best do you do that?
That's a good question. I think one of the, when we coach our team on this a lot, a challenging thing is for us to remember, we may do this every day. This client is doing this for the first time in 45 years. And so every time we're there with them, we've got to remember that this is new to them. They, they need our guidance. And so we try hard to, it's our day-to-day, but you got to remember every day that you go to work, this is somebody's huge life event that we have to be ready for.
Yeah. Well, what a wonderful gift you give to those folks and their families. So thank you for that.
We feel very fortunate to be able to provide it, so.
Truly, truly.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Trustee Jennings.
What educational supports do you use when you're training your employees?
That's a good question. We have, by belonging to the National Association of Senior We have, by belonging to the National Association of Senior and Specialty Move Managers, they provide a lot of assistance to us in this area. And then we also tried to bring in on occasion, experts in the field, and dementia is a good example of what we're talking about, where we try to have trainings where some people come in and talk to us about things like, how should we be speaking to somebody who's experiencing dementia? You know, how can we, what should, what should our body language look like? What should our face be looking like to help guide them through? So that's just one example of what we do.
And trustee Mitchell.
From sort of a Machiavellian business perspective, you guys are tapping into a market that I assume is fairly unmet. Talk a little bit about your competition out there.
Sure. Sure. Well, we do have competition. We're not the only ones in town that are doing this business. What we have tried to do to differentiate, there are some companies in town who are specifically professional organizers who also do moves. Or there are companies that, we are not the movers at Resettle Me, so we're not the guys with the trucks, but we partner, we have relationships with a couple of great moving companies. And then there are other companies that are the movers that also do a little bit of, you know, a little bit of helping on the side. We've, we are trying to differentiate ourselves as people who really understand the older population and all of the unique things that come into play with a move like that.
Yes, go right ahead.
My understanding is, I don't know this firsthand, obviously, but my understanding is for women-owned businesses, access to capital can be challenging. Can you talk a little bit about that?
I'm going to let you talk about this, Peggy.
Well, actually, we haven't really found it difficult yet for us to have access to the capital that we need. We're fortunate that we had some great family resources to get started with. We did take advantage of some of the funding that was available during the pandemic. And the fact that we were women-owned, I mean, we were just like a lot of companies who needed help at that time. So I would say we have a good banking relationship. And from that standpoint, it doesn't feel like we're suffering any disadvantage for being women-owned, but we haven't gone after the, you know, the big loans or anything yet. We haven't needed to. So that's been a good thing. So. All right. Any other questions? Thank you so much, and thank you for all that you do.
Absolutely. And I just would like to also thank Darren for all of his help this year. It's been much appreciated.
Our final award recipient sought the services of the Apex Accelerator. And this is the first year we have awarded an Apex Award. Apex is housed over with the SBDC. And I am so pleased to invite Philip Carr and his son Matt to join me at the podium. His success story was one of the first I heard when I took my position this summer. Keon told me all about this gentleman and the types of things that they were doing. He worked with both the Capital Access Center and Apex. Have I got, still got Matt and Philip?
No, I'm here.
Oh, there you go. Come up here. Look right past you. Thank you. So this company is called KV F70, also known as Mule Barn Services, has excelled in food service contracting since its establishment in 2018, led by Philip Carr. Mule Barn stands out for its exceptional service and commitment to quality. With nearly 30 years of experience, Carr has a rich history in vending and food service operations, including running two successful franchises. As a senior Kansas Business Enterprise Program Licensed Blind Vendor, he has been a strong advocate for our program. I don't know if Matt is still here.
Yeah, I'm Matt.
I mean, the gentleman from the.
Oh, yes, Matt Miller.
Matt Miller. Yeah. So Matt Miller with the state of Kansas came to join him because he is so excited about, about our client. Mule Barn Services turned to us to help with capital access and federal contracting. And he has worked with several individuals in our office. Philip said that the Kansas SBDC and the Apex Accelerator advisors have gone above and beyond. He emphasizes patience and building a dedicated team as keys to his success. He says your success relies on the partnership and quality of your employees. He has an incredible story, and I hope that you, you have had excellent questions from the trustees, so I hope you're able to tease some of this story out because it is impressive. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks, everybody. My father, since his regards, he had to go back to Levelworth. We got a lot of operations happening at Fort Levelworth and quite a bit of drive, so he just asked me to try to hold the floor.
So tell us a little bit about your company and what you do.
Yeah, so my father is a, he's the senior licensed blind vendor for the state of Kansas. Like I said, Matt Miller, he's the administrator. The offices, the Kansas Department of Children and Families for, it's a federal program, federal law, and obviously, he's, he would be more of an expert on this. But anything that's food service related for federal, state, and local contracts. When we first moved to Kansas, when I was 15, moved just to Kansas, my father, he was a machinist, he could do anything with his hands, and he lost his eyesight. So he needed a way to, as my mom said in this last recent interview, kind of, you know, be, still be productive because he, my father likes to grind. And so he became part of this program. I was his, I was his driver. We filled up vending machines or whatever. I worked that through high school. My younger brother worked through it when I went to college, while he was in college. And then my mother, we couldn't. He eventually, 14 years ago, took over the food service operations for what's called the Garrison or the main site D back at Fort Levelworth. We just did a full transition of that program from a teaming partner. It's kind of like a mentor, mentor protege program, one July. And before that, it supported the state program. They gave us the ability to kind of, for a new contract with the military corrections contract complex at Fort Levelworth. We won that in March. So we went from having two employees, me supporting my father, to having 85 employees now. Yeah, so it's like a 40x increase over the last four months. So, and I just, before I, you know, anything else, I just want to say, you know, as I was telling, you know, Keon, Vance, and the group here, and Mr. Miller, you know, there's this, I'm a Marine, you know, we talk about crawl, walk, run. And so we expected that we would be able to crawl, walk, run, and then maybe fly over five years. And we got the call that we had to not just crawl, but fly within, within 30 days of contract award on a very complex government contract. And we, the plane would have never left the ground if not for Keon and Vance and everything that they've been able to do, being, you know, being in our corner. They gave us in, from Middle Eastern deployments, it's called lost weight and capability. So they provided a significant, and still do, being in our corner as we negotiate with banks and also figure out the voodoo magic of defense contract requests. So I just want to say thank you again for this wonderful program in Johnson County. It's incredible.
So that is an amazing story. And first of all, thank you for your service. But I also want to just compliment the courage that it must take to put your hat in the ring for a contract that you know you can't perform under, and if you get it, you're going to have to literally take off zero to 60 in like two minutes. So, man, that's how you do it, right? And congratulations to you guys for being able to do that and having the courage to put yourselves out there. So questions?
And I just wanted to say, I'm kind of, since we found out about the SBDC and Apex, I'm kind of dual-using this program. So obviously, supporting my father and his defense contracting company. I'm also a serviceable veteran, small business, and a lot of people in our community, especially those that serve in Iraq and Afghanistan, they're just getting out. We weren't familiar with these programs. So we are taking as much advantage of this program, both here and Virginia, kind of our, you know, our veteran mafia network, they really doesn't know about these resources. So I can't, I can't speak highly enough of all the support that you guys are providing.
I want to hear more about your veteran mafia network. Another time, trustee Smith Everett.
Yeah, we'll call the tribe.
I was just going to ask, what do you think landed you this first contract? Because that's pretty incredible. Sometimes you have to prove with past experience, but it sounds like there were two of you, and you were doing a pretty great job previously. What do you think set you apart to get this first?
It's ironically, so, you know, my dad has been grinding as the licensed blind vendor and kind of an owner-operator with a teaming partner for the last 14 years at Fort Levelworth. And this whole time, you know, I was either at the Naval Academy or I was deployed in the Marine Corps. And, you know, I really get to come back to Levelworth during Christmas. And then I, I just didn't realize he was doing defense contracting. And then I, I've worked both on the Marine Corps side and on the, on the industry side as a project manager or whatever. And during, with COVID hit, I was in DC, and me and my brother, we bubbled up with our folks. So it was awesome. I spent more time with them than I'd ever had a chance to deal with them since I was on a team. And as we're sitting there, one of those cold nights in the wintertime, he started talking about his business, like, oh, you do defense contracting. And then we started looking at his proposals, and I was able to take all of his knowledge of the operations of, he's been running restaurants and whatever for forever, and then, you know, my experience of, of the, the arcane of, of defense contracting and proposal development. And yeah, we just worked together to kind of make it happen.
Any other questions? Gosh, thank you so much. I wish we could have met your dad. He sounds like a fantastic guy, but obviously, he's off taking care of business.
And I just wanted to, just another shout out for the state and for this program. So we have been asked to stand up a, kind of a mentor protege program for the other licensed blind vendors for the state. We're using heavily leveraging all of the resources through the SBDC here and Apex here in Topeka and in Wichita. So we're going to execute that program, starting with the online school, OJT, for the licensed blind vendors, starting one August.
Awesome.
Yes, ma'am.
So are you back here? Are you local now?
Yes, I, we operate at a Levelworth, yeah.
Okay. I didn't know if you were still trying to work with your dad. I just want to say, I am so grateful to COVID that it brought you back home because what a tremendous resource you are to be able to take all of this knowledge, all of the things you're learning, and leverage it in your own networks and for the benefit of other people in Levelworth and in Johnson County. So thank you. What a great asset, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Probably where I add the disclaimer, results not typical. But, but I will tell you that it's a great privilege to serve Johnson, wind up Miami Counties. Thank you all for making, we are very aware of the role you play in making our services possible, and we appreciate it greatly. So our team thanks you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All righty then. It is now the time on our agenda for the open forum. The open forum section of the board agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum period during each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak. And in that instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door 15 minutes prior to each regularly scheduled board meeting. When addressing the board, registered speakers are asked to remain at the podium, should be respectful and civil, and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter concerns personnel or student issues or matters that are being addressed through our established grievance or suggestion processes or otherwise the subject of review by the college or board. It's my understanding we have no registered speakers this evening, and so that makes this part of the agenda go much quicker. All right. Next to the board reports, and first up is our college lobbyist, Mr. Dick Carter. And welcome to Overland Park.
I'm in person.
Thank you very much. Everything's very quiet in Topeka right now. Everyone is out campaigning for House and Senate races in the state of Kansas, and that means not very many interim committees are meeting right now. On that topic, the Legislative Coordinating Council met on July 9th last week and approved several interim committees to meet. And some of the ones that I'll be watching, there were 11 standing joint committees that were approved. Those are, those are just ones that exist and don't need special requests. But we'll be watching the Legislative Budget Committee, as well as pensions, investments, and benefits. And then we'll kind of pay attention to what's going on with the IT interim committee, as well as the Kansas Security Interim Committee. Lots of different topics that they can discuss that can have an impact on campus activity. There were seven special committees approved out of a list of more than 20. The ones that we'll be paying attention to are foreign trade and regulatory sandboxes. And you're probably thinking, what is a regulatory sandbox? That is kind of a hot topic right now across the United States. One of the models that is being utilized is out of Utah. Small business owners frequently face a number of hurdles that they have to jump through at the local level. And so this is an attempt at a blanket approach to reduce some of that burden on small business owners. It's not a bad approach, but it definitely could have an impact on the type of activity that's going on at the college as far as what we're teaching, some of the trades, and some of the classes that are offered here. And so we'll be watching that activity that goes on in that particular committee. There have been bills already before the legislature in the past couple of years related to regulatory sandboxes. We'll also be watching the State Employee Compensation Committee. Again, not a connection to the campus. You make those decisions here when you talk about the budget and when administration makes proposals. But there will be a comprehensive study at the Board of Regents level on compensation and benefits. And so we'll be watching that just to see how that compares, and if there's anything that comes out of that that could impact the college as well. Let's talk dollars and cents. June revenue numbers were up after May being down. We knew May was going to be down. But we're anticipating that moving forward, we're going to see a decline in revenues in the hundreds of millions of dollars. And that is because of the tax policy that was passed during the special legislative session, which the legislature approved and the governor signed. So we'll see tax relief, but that'll also have an impact then on the dollars that are coming into the state's coffers. That's all known. Those were, those were all calculated as that legislation was making its way through. But it does make an impact on what happens moving forward. In that vein, now is the time when the institutions submit their budget request to the Board of Regents for an overall approval and submission to the state for the, for the governor's budget to be developed, as well as just the conversation that goes on overall with budget development across the board. So for the two-year sector, the request is the same base amount as fiscal year 2024. So what we had in fiscal year 2024 is being requested again, but we're, there is a request for an additional six and a half million in the area of cybersecurity. So for the past couple of years, each institution, all 19 community colleges have received 250,000 apiece or each for cybersecurity improvement or investment. This would take that number to 500,000 per institution. There's no formula other than it's just an even amount across the 19 institutions. You can kind of think about that in your mind as you're, as you're processing that. The other amount would be about 13 million for workforce innovation incentives and pilot projects. So the total request for the two-year sector for new money is only $26 million. When you think about that, that's a fairly small amount spread across, across 19 institutions. And in fact, some of that money is included for the technical college sector as well, combined request. So we'll see how that meets approval or not when the Board of Regents goes into their annual retreat at the end of July, where they have a budget workshop and talk about what their priorities look like for the coming legislative year. So we just started the state's fiscal year on July 1 for fiscal year 2025. And so it's kind of a New Year's party, if you will, but not a lot of activity going on in Topeka right now. So I would stop there and see if there's any questions about those items, or if there's something else bubbling around that folks have questions about.
All right. Thank you, Dick, for your report. Questions for Mr. Carter? Trustee Smith Everett. I can always count on you.
It's always me. Just, Dick, I have two questions for you. One is, and I never know, because we kind of qualify in both categories. We have a technical arm to us. Do we get to qualify in the governor's budget under the technical college budget? Or we just put in the two-year bucket and it's separate? I never know. We have a, we have a part of our budget that is from the technical, right?
We do. So I'm going to, I'm going to answer it how I think it should be answered, but then I'm going to look at Rachel to make sure I'm answering it correctly. So there's tiered and non-tiered funding that covers that coursework and those activities. And so that would be where we would pick up some of the dollars related to technical training.
And the tiered and non-tiered. I, it just occurs to me, and it's only because of, I've been working in a business sector that I've never worked in before this year, and the skilled trades are just. that I've never worked in before this year and the skilled trades are just desperate for people. And I'm always surprised that we're not asking for more money in the career technical trade sector to be able to grow programs across Kansas. I mean, I was just talking to a guy who's moving up here from Kansas City, from the Wichita area on CNC lathe machines and that there, it's a dying breed and everybody that's retiring, it hasn't, there's no replacements. They're, they do not have enough manpower and yet we just, I don't know, we're never asking for support from the budget to grow those programs in Kansas. Am I wrong? Is there any group advocating for that that I'm not aware of?
So I think you would see that request, um, the increase, uh, amount, uh, reflected in the 13 million that's being requested for apprenticeships, innovative programs and pilot projects, um, would certainly fall in, into the category of some of the things that you're talking about.
Cause there's a, I mean, yeah, I could go down the list, welding, all the others and they're desperate and I never hear what we're doing as a legislative body in Kansas to try to tackle that. My second question is, this is sort of your only downtime that I ever hear about where you're not running from one end of the Capitol to the other. Are you doing anything fun? Anything fun in your New Year's?
Yeah, each day I go to the mailbox and I get a stack of, uh, email or, uh, letter requests for funding for campaigns.
That's not fun.
For 165 seats in the state of Kansas.
It doesn't count as fun.
Yes, I've had the opportunity to get out and do a little hiking, uh, with scouts and, and some training for scouts as well. And it's been a great respite.
Good, very good. Glad to hear.
My sense is your idea of fun is like sleeping on the ground somewhere with very little above you between you and the stars, but it's just me guessing.
It's pretty awesome.
Any other questions for Mr. Carter? Mr., uh, Trustee Cross, any questions?
After sleeping on the ground, if I may, Madam Chair, after sleeping on the ground, do you ever feel like when you go home, like you're sleeping on a marshmallow?
It's not as roughing it as, as you might think. Um, you can get the, you can get that pack weight down and still have a mattress that you're carrying along with you that you have to, to blow up every night, so.
How was film on?
It was great.
Good.
The delay, it gets me every time. Pack weight and my 5,000 pound camper probably are vastly different.
Little bit different.
So I was a little, um, excited to hear about medical marijuana and sedation dentistry as I'm sure maybe some of our, um, listeners may be as well, but that apparently doesn't rise to the top of, of what we're, what we're here to talk about. So, um, so with that, um, maybe we'll remain one of four states in the country who's still.
There you go.
Have medicinal marijuana, so. All right, thank you for your report, Mr. Carter.
You bet.
All right. Next up is College Council and my note here says that we're going to hear from Kim Fuller. All right, come on up to the podium.
I am here in place of Jason. He's at a conference in Kentucky or something, so I'm gonna, he prepared everything for me, so I should not have a misstep. Um, so the College Council met on July 10th and the, uh, Staff Council, they have, you know, some good, uh, representation at College Council and they had, um, had some recent elections and they, um, Grant Carlson is one who got elected and Melissa Galloway Doctor was another one and then Elektra Arzola, um, was the third one. So they got three new people. And then, um, the Staff Council had been asked to address, um, some of the issues or discussions that have happened around June, June 3rd, June, Juneteenth, um, as a holiday. And I'm not sure where that conversation is at this point, but that was one of the things that they had reported on. And then, uh, they'll be voting for new members, uh, next week, so that this was the 10th, so maybe that happened this week, I'm not sure. And then, uh, there was a very nice shout out to Human Resources, um, from the folks on Staff Council because they've really worked hard to have a good collegial relationship and they felt like it's been mutually beneficial both ways. So that's been, anything like that's always nice to hear. The Academic Branch Council doesn't meet during the summer, um, so that they have a new chair, that's Jamie Cunningham. And, um, I think they'll be doing, you know, when, once it gets, school starts again, then they'll have their regular meetings. And, um, one of the things that they're, they have been working on over the summer is, um, kind of the, the, you know, there's been a lot of focus on online classes and kind of assessment of the quality of the education that's happening with the online classes. So they've been doing, um, a little work, kind of testing some things, you know, in that, in that arena. Um, I, I guess I must have gotten kind of like lightheaded or something, cause I volunteered to have somebody look at my class. And so that, that's been, it's been interesting, you know, what you learn when you just are so used to doing kind of the same thing. And, um, I think probably it's well-known that it's coming from the State Board of Education in terms of, you know, trying to really insert some quality into what's happening, you know, on the, uh, online classes. So that's going on. And then, um, the Council reviewed its bylaws and we made a few little tweaks to them, but, um, I think that the changes were approved without opposition and the updated bylaws, this is Jason talking now, the updated, cause I'm not doing that, but the updated bylaws should be published soon. So that'll be something, you know, that will be forthcoming, maybe by the next meeting. I don't know if you all look at the bylaws. And then we just talked some about what can we do in this new year as we get into it. And I think there's been a lot of conversation around what is shared governance here at the college and, you know, who's included in that and how are those meetings, you know, held and what are agendas and that sort of thing. So I think that might be getting a little more, um, visible attention as we move into the new year. And I think that is, oh, and it also says, Kim knows the meeting is at 5:00 in GEB Wednesday. Although I had to ask three people. The GEB building is like my, ugh, I get in here and I, I have no idea where I am, you know, cause I teach online and so I'm not on campus very often. And I have a horrible sense of direction, so. But I did, uh, I did kind of worm my way into a back way of getting here, so, but I'm not going to reveal my sources. Um, and then I just would like to thank, uh, Dr. Corb because when we were in College Council, you know, Jason kind of turned to her to say, can you do my report? And she said, of course I can, but I'd like to be able to, you know, see if there's anybody else that's interested in doing that, um, and having the opportunity to do that. And my background was in healthcare. I worked in hospitals my whole career until I retired and, um, but I'm still kind of one of those people that if somebody thinks something should be done, then I kind of start thinking, I could do that. So I thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you.
And he, um, this isn't like a big question thing.
Oh, it might be. I'm glad you were able to find us. You know, it's interesting that I was talking to someone the other day who hadn't been on campus for 20 years and they were saying to me, oh, I've been to your campus 20 years ago. And I said, no, you've not been to our campus, um, if it was 20 years ago. But thank you very much for your report. Questions for Ms. Fuller. Trustee Smith Everett, go right ahead.
It's me again. I just wondered what class you teach online?
I'm sorry, say that again.
What class do you teach online?
I teach population health, which is a big thing in healthcare reimbursement these days. And then I also teach a workflow design and, uh, workflow analysis and design class. So it's kind of helping, you know, the students prepare for the workplace and learning how to put together, you know, their assignments, but they could be, you know, an assignment that you would have if you were employed. And so we're really trying to help get them, you know, in the mindset of, you know, it's not good enough to just answer part of the questions or do part of the assignment, you know, you need to really think about what you're doing and get it, you know, do it fully. And so that, that's been some interesting conversations there too, so.
Very good. Well, thank you.
Any other questions? Trustee Cross? Nothing from the ceiling. Thank you very much.
No ma'am.
Thank you very much for taking the time to deliver the report. We so appreciate it. Next up is the Faculty Association and, uh, speaking on behalf of them this evening is Dr. Lisa Cole and Dr. Megan Doyle. Good evening.
Greetings. You coming up with me? Okay. All right. We are thrilled to be with you this evening. My name is Megan Doyle. I'm an Associate Professor of College Success and the Lead Faculty Fellow for the Center for Teaching and Learning.
And I'm Lisa Cole. I'm a professor of accounting and I'm also a faculty fellow. And we're happy to be here. We're going to share with you, uh, about the Center for Teaching and Learning and our continued work that we've been working on. Under the direction of Dr. Farrell Jada and CTL, uh, the CTL was created as part of a strategic plan and has been under construction for two years now. In addition to ourselves, there are three other faculty fellows, Scott Gilmore, which I believe he's here. Scott, Scott, okay, there he is. Scott and he's in construction science. David Vanderham, history and humanities. Haley Valanga, who's in communication studies. And then we have, uh, some past fellows, who was Ted Rollins, English, and Maggie Curry-Chu, dental hygiene, and Damon Fairborn, Barnes, drafting. In year one, the faculty fellows focused on building the foundational structure of CTL by creating mission, vision, mission, vision and values. And the group also began with their first initiative, which is, was redesigning the faculty orientation, formerly Lens.
So we just finished year two of CTL and we focused on our physical location. Um, it is located in library in room 372 and we are in the same area as educational technology, which is a great pairing for our faculty to be able to find CTL and the educational technology as a full faculty resource. We're excited to share with you that the space is finished. So, um, we are now open and ready for use. CTL was designed as a space to be comfortable for faculty, but also for faculty to be able to go in and collaborate with one another. You will, when you come in, you will see that the space is maybe a little unconventional. We have it set up more as kind of a relaxed living space. It does not look like a classroom per se, um, and we really think the faculty are going to enjoy that collaborative space. Dr. Carlyle Carter, who is Assistant Professor in Interior Design, she helped us design that space and, uh, each of you has a personal invitation to come and visit and, and see this amazing space. We're really thankful for that physical space. Of course, the CTL is also focused on programming, which is a heavy part of what we do to provide the programming for our faculty. And we really try to focus on teaching presence in the classroom and their pedagogy or their philosophy. And we wanted to highlight just two of our many programs with you today. As Lisa said, the first that I want to share with you is the redesigned new faculty orientation program. Um, it was formerly called Lens, so some of you may have heard that. We still have lots of people say, oh, is it Lens? We're like, what did Lens stand for? And they don't know. So we are now calling it New Faculty Orientation or the acronym, because JCC loves acronyms, is NFO. So when we were considering this redesign for new faculty orientation, we first considered that many college faculty are subject matter experts, but they have not had formal training on how to teach. So we began and we researched and we researched and we researched what the current teaching trends were in higher education, specifically community colleges. And we started to build our program and our curriculum off of these innovative markers. Last year, we had 24 new faculty members go through this redesign and we gave them a final survey at the end of the year. And I am really happy to tell you that 94% of our new faculty felt the program positively guided them towards personal and professional growth at JCC. So we are really proud of, um, of that and, and the impact that they felt like it had on their transition as new faculty at JCC. This academic year, uh, new faculty orientation, the curriculum will continue to focus and equip our new faculty with teaching skills, knowledge, and the support that they need to be high-quality instructors that will benefit our students.
The other program will, you'll start hearing another acronym, AQ. AQ stands for the Association of College and University Educators. This is an organization that offers courses, pathways and certifications. So starting in August, we have 32 of our faculty, uh, that represent over 23 departments across campus, ranging from automotive technology to sociology and, of course, accounting. And have volunteered to join over 33,000 faculty who have already taken courses through AQ. Our faculty, uh, are going to be enrolled in a certification course, Effective Online Teaching Practices. That's the course. And this course is designed for faculty who teach asynchronous, synchronous, hybrid or high flex, uh, formats. Uh, this certification includes four courses, total over a 10-month period. So we'll start in August of '24 and will end in May of '25. Each of the courses are six to seven weeks long. The courses are promoting active learning online, inspiring inquiry and lifelong learning in your online course, creating an inclusive and supportive online learning environment, and designing learning and centered and equitable courses. AQ has provided data that indicates instructors who have completed this certification are proven to boost persistence and completion rates and also improve faculty confidence and engagement. As an extra benefit here at JCC, I have the opportunity to facilitate face-to-face bi-monthly meetings with this cohort so that we can collaborate and discuss teaching principles here at JCC.
In addition, the CTL has also named four adjunct faculty fellows. Um, and they are Rebecca Castendick in English for Academic Purposes, Kim Fuller because she said she likes to volunteer for things, um, Healthcare Information Systems, Cindy Harmison, Legal Studies, and David Jones from Mathematics. So those are our four adjunct faculty fellows. And this group of fellows have been hard at work on developing the event synergize 2024, which is the adjunct, uh, professional development training that's happening on August 19th and is open to all JCC adjuncts, where they will learn teaching strategies and all the resources available to them at JCC. They're also working on redesigning and updating the adjunct faculty handbook and they're, this year they're going to be working on an adjunct faculty new orientation program. And finally, on behalf of the Faculty Association, we wanted to highlight one of our members, Nick Mancini. He is Associate Professor of Reading and he has been appointed by the KNAA to the Kansas Blueprint for Literacy Advisory Committee. And this is a partnership between KBOR and KSDE to develop a literacy initiative within the state. So we wanted to just let you know all that great work that he is doing. And lastly, we would like to invite you to the Faculty Association Party, uh, beginning of the semester, academic year party. It will be held Friday, August 23rd, 4:30 to 10:00 PM. If you are feeling up for some celebratory, uh, time, it will be at the Quivera Falls Clubhouse. Thank you for your time and we are open for questions.
Thank you so much for that report. You know, as I was sitting here listening to you talk about the, the great stuff that's going on, um, with the Teaching and Learning Center, I remember going through the Lens program almost 20 years ago. Can't tell you what Lens stands for, but.
Learning has changed and everything.
Okay, there you go.
So I should know.
But what I do remember is the relationships that I developed going through that program. Um, some of those people I still love seeing around campus, right? Because we got to know each other so well. That's what collaboration is all about and it sounds like that's really kind of the focus of the Teaching and Learning Center and how wonderful is that? So, uh, thank you for that. Any questions for, actually, Trustee Cross has a question, so he's first up.
Just thank you, Madam Chair. Two, our two professors.
Any questions for, actually, Trustee Cross has a question, so he's first up.
Just thank you, Madam Chair. Two professors here, with respect to the master agreement that we just concluded renegotiating, what, if anything, have you guys heard about with respect to the response to what was accomplished?
I got a new contract email here just recently. So that was a good thing. If we had a number on it, that was okay as well. So that's my take.
I would say that the response is that faculty are generally very happy with the renegotiated contract. Anything else, Andrea?
That's on top.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, thank you, Madam Chair.
You're very welcome. Trustee Smith Everett, you're up next.
How did you know?
Hi, Brad.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I, as a former instructional coach in the K-12 world, this is my jam. I could sit and have coffee with you all forever. So my father was a faculty here and was here for 17 years, and I was always introduced to people based on whether they were in his Lens group first. So my first introduction was, this is so-and-so, they were in my Lens group. And that's how I oriented myself to faculty in the college. I believe you were actually in my father's Lens group. He's pretty sure you two were in the same Lens group. Just FYI on that one. But my point is, the same as Trustee Rails, which is, it was the relationship building that is what stuck with him. Even 25 years later, he still runs into people and sees people, and it's based on his Lens group. And what he really appreciated was that it was from all over campus and that people in very different sectors that he would never meet or run into in any other way. He got to know, he got to know their practice. He came from food and chef and had no idea how to teach besides being married to a teacher. So I know that that was important. I guess I wanted to know a little bit on your reimagining of the new one. Do you still have that connectivity built in and that diversity of people coming from various sectors across campus?
Yes, that's a great question. So whenever the original four faculty fellows, when, year one, when we were starting the redesign, we wanted to set up New Faculty Orientation to be a sample course. So what we did is we wrote learning objectives for the program, and the very first learning objective that we have is building community within that group. Because research shows us that at a community college, faculty who feel connected to their peers put more into their teaching practices, which we know then helps students, and we retain students that way. But from a faculty perspective, we're retaining our faculty when they feel connected to one another as well. So yes, that is the very first learning objective that we wrote.
I love that. My follow-up then is, well, and that goes with, we've talked about on this board many times about the need to build in a sense of belonging for both our faculty and staff as well as our students. And belonging means that you feel like you can walk around this campus and it is yours as much as someone else's, and that you feel interwoven with the tapestry that we have. So that's a really important part. I know we've really had quite a turnover of faculty since COVID, and so making sure that they feel they're connected is really important for me. It's a top priority. My question for you about the adjunct, as you were describing all the programs, I'm assuming most of that until the very end is really for full-time faculty only. Is that right? So for adjunct and the two-day, or you have something for them you mentioned at the end?
Yes, the Synergize event, yes.
Are they paid for their time?
The fellows?
No.
Or the...
The adjunct...
The adjuncts are not. It is volunteer, correct?
To attend.
Say that again?
Not to attend.
Yes.
Where they do that for the people, the adjuncts.
Yes.
So they're, right, the fellows, I would assume.
Yeah.
But it's by, it's invitation and volunteer.
Yes. When I was adjunct, I attended professional developments to help incentivize or emphasize my teaching strategies, but I did that free of charge.
Yeah. So that's why I bring it up. It's an equity issue for me. It's been a longstanding issue on this campus, and we have over 500 adjunct faculty. And I often hear that, when I hear complaints from the community members, and I drill down to find out, it's often an adjunct faculty member. They aren't given the same level of training, they're not given the same level of information. Of course, that's part of the adjunct, that's just going to be part of it. I would argue, as an individual board member on this board, it's something we could do better at. And if we want to have the high quality for all students, no matter what teacher, when they roll the dice on enrollment, no matter what teacher they happen to fall into, I want to make sure that quality is there, and those adjuncts have been given the opportunity to be educated and equipped to do better with online in particular, but also in person, and be given that same high-quality education. Not paying people for their time is a roadblock to that happening, so that's really just for this board more than anybody, but your presentation highlighted that for me, and I just wanted to put that out in public. And that concludes my comments. Trustee Rail.
Thank you for that, Trustee Smith Everett. I know there were some questions over here.
Yeah, I was just curious, for the new faculty, do you meet with them monthly for training? Is that how you...
So we actually meet with them, we will be meeting with them four days in August. They will be coming the week before P L D Week, and we will meet with them four days. And we will have sessions that are focused on being day-one ready. So those four days, we will focus on preparing our new faculty to be prepared for their first day of classes. And then they meet twice a month. It's eight times over the course of the academic year, but they meet twice a month, September, October, November, and then once in December. And then we meet in February and also April. And we meet for quite a long period of time. We meet for two and a half hours at each of those sessions during the academic year. They are receiving three credits of release time, so they are not teaching as heavy of a load their first semester to give them the opportunity to focus on their teaching and their organization of their course.
So then in, so they are being paid for their time?
Yes, yeah.
As a full-time faculty?
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much for your report.
Thank you.
Moving right along, it's time for our report on J-Sert, and we'll turn to Trustee Smith Everett.
It's me again. The J-Sert received $1.9 million in sales tax in June, and $645,000 was distributed to each of the three university entities for a total of $4.1 million distributed year to date. I believe last month I said I would be going on to OHEC. I was incorrect about that. I am going on to Edwards Campus, and it is in August, so we will talk about that in two months. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you for that report. Any questions for Trustee Smith Everett? Hearing none. Next up is our Kansas Association of Community Colleges report, and Trustee Cross, are you giving that report?
I am. We did not meet, and I have no report, Madam Chair, and that concludes my report.
All right, that's awesome. I doubt that there are any questions for you, but I'll ask. And hearing none. Next up is the Foundation Report, and Trustee Hamel.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Summer Chant Evening is set for November 9th at the Overland Park Convention Center. Sponsorship opportunities are available now. Full tables will be sold for $5,000, and new for this year, the ability to purchase half a table for $2,000 is also available. Sponsorships are selling fast, and we're already halfway to our income goal. Underwriting opportunities will also be available. For more information, visit jcc.edu/SEE2024. Summer Sips and Scholarships was a huge success and doubled the income from last year, and we'll plan to fund 24 student scholarships in the upcoming school year. Tickets and tables are for sale for the Harvest Dinner on Friday, August 23rd, at the Rainier Center. Evergy and Hudamaki are both returning as event sponsors again this year, and the visiting chef is a J C C culinary graduate from the Farmhouse KC. Don't miss our opportunity to attend this deliciously fun event and help support our sustainable agriculture scholarships. Visit jcc.edu/harvish-dinner. Save the date on September 18th at 5:30 P. M. for an evening of 1960s fashion at the Johnson County Museum. The Foundation is partnering with the museum and the fashion design and merchandising team to host a V I P event featuring the historic Fashion Design Collection, which is part of the exhibit at Johnson County Museum. $50 a ticket will help support the J C C C Historical Fashion Collection. Special thanks to Lee Wood Lifestyle Magazine for securing event underwriters. Foundation community socials are starting in the fall. Dates, times, and locations will be shared ASAP. The Bodaker family agreed to continue the Bodaker Scholarship Program for the '24-'25 school year. We will be thrilled to honor the second year of scholarships of the honors graduation in the spring of 2025. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much for your report. Any questions for Trustee Hamel? Trustee Ratan?
I think the feedback was received, but I know that we were disappointed that we could not spend a longer time at Summer Sips. So I would ask that next year, the consideration of our board meeting is taken into account on scheduling it.
I get it.
Yeah, good point. Any other questions?
I got chastised this week because I was told there were only 12 tickets left for the Harvest Dinner, and I had not secured mine. So mine's been secured, but now there's only 11, and maybe not even that. So if you haven't gotten your tickets, get them, they're going fast.
Yeah, and it sounds like the same can be said maybe for Summer Chanted Evening. It seems a little early for us to be talking about them being halfway to their goal, so I think if you're wanting to get tickets, probably ought to do that sooner rather than later, and don't want to miss that event for sure. All right. Any other questions? Hearing none. Thank you for your report, and that takes us to our committee reports and recommendations. First up is the Management and Finance Committee Report, and Trustee Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Management and Finance Committee held their meeting at 8:30 a. m. on Wednesday, July 3rd, 2024. The information related to the meeting can be found on pages 1 through 7 of the board packet. The Management and Finance Committee received the following reports from staff. We had an Information Services Report. Rob Caffey, Vice President, Information Services, C I O, along with Matt Holmes, Director of Network and Data Center Operations, and Don Campbell, Director of Project Management Office, provided the Quarterly Information Services Report. The report included a review of the I S leadership structure and updates on information security initiatives and infrastructure activities. In addition, updates on summer projects and the Unified Communication System replacement were given. Capital acquisitions and improvement. Tom Hall, Associate Vice President, Campus Services and Facility Planning, provided an update on the status of the C D L Driving Range project and progress on the G E B first-floor renovations currently under construction on campus. The Management and Finance Committee has the following recommendations to present this evening. From the, Janelle Vogler, Vice President and Financial Officer, presented the Monthly Procurement Report. This month, we have six recommendations. The first one is for Warehouse Software as a Service Solution. It's on page two. It is the recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposal for S C Logic for a base year of $70,699 and a total estimated expenditure of $209,403 throughout the renewal options, and I so move.
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Mitchell, seconded by Trustee Smith Everett. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero, and you may go ahead with your next recommendation.
Second recommendation is on page three. It's for On Call Electrical Services. It is the recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposals from Heritage Electric, Vasquez Commercial Contracting, and Pro Circuit for On Call Electrical Services on an as-needed basis for a base year estimated amount of $250,000 and $1,250,000 throughout the renewal options, and I so move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Jennings. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Go right ahead.
The next recommendation is on page four. It's for On Call Carpentry Services. It is the recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposals from the Wilson Group, Heron Companies, and Vasquez Commercial Contracting for On Call Carpentry Services on an as-needed basis for a base year estimated amount of $500,000 and $2,500,000 throughout the renewal options, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Mitchell, seconded by Trustee Smith Everett. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Go ahead.
The next recommendation is on page five. It's for Herman Miller and Knoll Furniture. It is the recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the cooperative purchase from John A. Marshall for a total estimated expenditure of $150,000 throughout F Y '25, and I so move.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Mitchell, seconded by Trustee Jennings. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
The next recommendation is also on page five. It is the, it's for Steelcase Furniture. It is the recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the cooperative purchase from Scott Rice for a total estimated expenditure of $200,000 throughout fiscal year '25, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Mitchell, seconded by Trustee Jennings. Any discussion?
Trustee Ratan.
I'm sorry, Trustee Ratan. My apologies. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Just mix it up to keep me confused, right?
It puts on our toes.
The final recommendation is on page six. It's for Payment Gateway System, C 20-062-00. It is the recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve renewal extension option year one for net touch, or for touchnet, rather, excuse me, for $182,219, and for the total amount of $986,956 throughout the renewal extension options, and I so move.
Second.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Mitchell, seconded by Trustee Jennings. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. You may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes the report.
All right. Any questions for Trustee Mitchell before we move on? Thank you very much for your report. Next up is the Student Success Committee Report, and Trustee Ratan.
The report for July 2024 is that the Student Success Committee did not meet in person in July. However, the committee did review an affiliation agreement via email, and the renewal agreement with Midwest Anesthesia Associates can be found in the consent agenda on page 19 of the board packet. That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you very much, assuming there are no questions. We'll move on to the President's Recommendations for Action, and we'll start with the Treasurer's Report, and Trustee Hamel.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. The board packet includes the Treasurer's Report for the month ending May 31st, 2024. Starts on page eight. An ad valorem tax distribution of $48.8 million was received from Johnson County in June and will be included in the next month's report. Expenditures of the primary operating funds are within approved budgetary limits. It is my recommendation that the college administration, that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurer's Report for the month ending May 31st, 2024, subject audit.
Second.
Motion made by, did you make the motion?
Well, I was going to say, this is a, we should have the June one, right? It says May, and I...
We don't have the June report yet.
Okay.
We don't have the month closed. Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. And I so move.
Okay. Motion made by Trustee Hamel, seconded by Trustee Mitchell. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Does that conclude your report?
That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you very much. That takes us to the Monthly Report to the Board, and Dr. Korbe.
Thank you. Well, we only have about two more weeks in the summer term, so some classes are wrapping up while, at the same time, we're getting ready for a nine-month faculty to return and to welcome our new and returning students for the fall. You'll receive the full enrollment report, but a quick snap... the full enrollment report, but a quick snapshot shows that we are up 8.8% in headcount and 7.6% in credit hours compared to the same time last year. So we're trending in a, in a very good direction. In non-credit, as of July 12th, so they didn't have very many days here into FY25, but there are 2,692 enrollments. And actually, this is slightly ahead of where CE enrollment was at this point last year. It represents 15% of the projected FY25 enrollment of 17,662. So I think it's pretty good to be at 15% 12 days in.
Yeah.
That's right.
Is that not pretty good? But you have to remember their continuous enrollment strategy. So, so that's why it is. But, but also trending in a good direction, right? We're always excited to be able to report student accomplishments. And so just a few highlights, we had 100% of our dental hygiene graduates pass their clinical boards. That is 14 out of 18 passed on the first attempt and the remaining four on their second attempt. So that, that's pretty cool. We had 157 students this year that received their GED diploma through adult education. And a few of our Connect students participated in an internship program with dining services. So the students were given an opportunity to gain experience working in a live working environment in dining services in this cooperative agreement. Jason Arnett, who obviously couldn't be here tonight, so we'll have to remember to tell him, but he wrote an article highlighting the program and it was published in the National Association of College and University Food Services publication. So very cool. But it, it was just a really neat internship opportunity for the Connect students. And obviously, working here on campus, it was, it was just a great collaborative effort. So, and not only that, he got an article published, which was cool. So my last little announcement is very exciting because they are almost completing the renovation of the president's suite. And so we are so excited. We, we have a move date, but we've taken a little trip through there and we think we can move it up, Rachel. So, so it's, it's very, very close. So within the next week or two, we should be able to move in to the renovated space. We're very thankful for the space that we have been in. It's been, it's been great, but we're, we're ready to move.
I'm going to miss seeing that bare wall behind you in our Zoom calls.
I know. And, and we don't need any emotional support. When we move, we're, we don't need the resettled people. We're, we're happy. So we're good. But anyway, we are looking forward to that. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you for your report. Any questions or comments for Dr. Corb? All right. It sounds like we're off to a great start. Did you have a question?
Well, I just realized, will we get a tour? Do we get to tour it?
Oh, I'll take you. Want to go right now?
I'm excited to see it.
Yes.
You gonna offer to help her move in?
No, I'm not. That's where my support stops.
I'm just curious, you know, that when we see these numbers on headcount, you know, I like it when we see these positive numbers, but we don't always know how those are going to hold. What's your sense? I mean, those are some pretty significant increases. What's your sense as to whether or not those numbers are going to hold? Or, or do you anticipate that they're going to right-size in some way? Or I know I'm asking you to look into a crystal ball, but.
Well, and I, and Don can correct me if I'm wrong, but when you look at the trend line, we are, we are moving with the, the same typical trend line. So that's a good sign. And, and I think we're anticipating that we're in a good spot. We don't have any indicators that would say, oh, but we have this coming and that's going to make us drop. So I would say yes.
Okay. All right.
Complementary to that, I think when we have something fall apart and go wrong, we try to do an analysis of what went wrong. You know, is there anyone, is the cabinet doing analysis of what went right? Like, what are we doing the right way right now in this sweet spot that we need to keep the good stuff going?
We do, yes. We have those conversations as well. And we have indicators that, that we constantly watch. But that's one of the things that we'll be talking about. We have a, a retreat coming up in, in Cabinet and that's one of the things that we'll be talking about is what kinds of things are we going to, to look at next in enrollment? We, we have a, in the process of a new enrollment plan. So looking at all of those things. So yes, not just what went wrong, but what's going right.
Capture what's going right.
Yes. Yes.
And put it in a bottle and a pill.
Do more of that, right? Yes.
Yeah. Great question. Any other questions for Dr. Corb? All right. Thank you for your report. Next on the agenda is new business. I don't believe we have any new business. Old business, I don't believe we have any old business. Hearing none. That takes us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is an opportunity for us to take up in a single motion matters of a fairly routine nature. And the first thing that I'll ask is are there any items from the consent agenda that someone would like to have removed before we vote on it? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion made by trustee Smith Everett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Ratan. Any discussion? Trustee Smith Everett.
I'm so sorry. I did not have it pulled up. I believe we have, we have lost someone. On, is it this one? That we had someone that passed away? Oh, thank you. And I just wanted to recognize their contribution to our campus and tell their families that our condolences are with them. And I'm so sorry, I don't have it pulled up to recall the name. I just remember it in the.
Stephanie Stury.
Yes.
Thank you. What was it again?
Stephanie S-T-E-U-R-Y Stury.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
She was a member of our bookstore team for about 10 years.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The concession, consent agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero. We do have not one, but two executive sessions this evening. So to start, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for consultation with legal counsel regarding a pending legal matter, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. No action will be taken during this session and the executive session will last for 30 minutes.
She says.
Beginning at, beginning at 6:45 and ending at 7:15, at which time open session will resume at this same location. We'd like to invite all trustees, Dr. Judy Corb, Christina McGee, Kelsey Nazar, and Derek Teeter. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Motion made by trustee Mitchell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Jennings. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries seven to zero. We will reconvene in executive session in about six minutes. It is 7:15. We have returned from executive session. No action was taking. And it, taken. And at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into a second executive session for the purpose of an employee evaluation under the Personnel Matters of Non-Elected Personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act. No action will be taken during this session. The executive session will last for one hour. We will begin at 7:20 and we will end at 8:20, at which time open session will resume at this same location. We'd like to invite all trustees and Dr. Judy Corb to join this executive session. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by trustee Mitchell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Ratan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. We will reconvene at 7:20 in executive session. It is 2020 hours. We have returned from executive session. No action was taken. And at this point in time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, I move to adjourn.
We have a motion by trustee Mitchell. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Jennings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. We are adjourned.
Thank you.